It's okay. Thank you. Welcome tonight. We are actually going to take just a couple of more minutes. We're running a little bit late, so we're going to start in about a minute or two. So for those watching on TV, we'll be starting here in about a minute or two. Okay. I hereby resume the regular meeting of the Board of Education. For those watching, you will notice that we had an earlier closed session on collective bargaining as per our agenda. So we are resuming. And will the clerk please call the roll? Here. Here. We're having some difficulty with our mics. Great. Thank you for the roll call. And now we have Principal Rachel Philippi and the Mackenzie students to lead in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you for being here tonight, students.
Hello, as we gather in, we want to thank you for this opportunity. I am joined by our librarian, Ms. Lynn Isaac, our tech teacher, Mrs. Gary, and Mackenzie students across various grade levels. Tonight, we will be highlighting Mackenzie's STEAM innovative learning opportunities that have been going on. This is our second year in the Learning Commons. We've had many great experiences that our students are going to share with you.
My name is Tiernan. In one of our STEAM activities in the Learning Commons, we enjoyed a read aloud of The Dinosaur Expert, which is about a girl who wants to be a paleontologist. Then we tried being paleontologists by putting together dinosaur bones to create a dinosaur.
My name is Rebecca, and I'm in third grade. For a win time, we used our critical thinking and creativity to design and build something out of cardboard. I built a human-sized board game. One of my successes was that I figured out how to piece and fit together cardboard.
Hello, my name is Cooper, and I'm in third grade. And during our code, we had the choice to code between Frozen, Minecraft, Star Wars, and the sports activity.
My name is Mason, and I'm third grade. All these coding challenges, we use coding blocks to move our player towards certain angles, have items appear and disappear, and insert repeat commands only using a certain number of coding blocks to complete the task.
My name is Leila. I'm in third grade. Whatever coding game we choose, we have to stick with it the entire time, even when it gets really difficult. This allows us to feel what programmers would feel when something didn't work.
My name is Bryce, and I'm in fourth grade. One of our monthly STEAM challenges was to use our critical thinking skills.
Hi, I'm Jake, and I'm in fourth grade. And we used one sheet of paper to build up something high enough to hold up a dictionary and for a dinosaur to pass under.
Hi, my name is Fred. And I'm in fourth grade. We collaborated and communicated to come up with the idea to build four pillars to hold up the dictionaries.
My name is Evan, and I'm in fourth grade. We beat the record by stacking 16 dictionaries.
Thank you for your support. We hope that you come visit us soon.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, those were some pretty exciting projects. Thank you very much for coming and sharing them with us tonight. Next up, we'll talk about the artwork behind us here. Linda Paritz's High Crest students created the beautiful artwork in the boardroom this month. Sixth graders mixed acrylic paints to exactly match the packaging for their pop art paintings to my right. And fifth graders studied Buddhist culture and used math skills to design beautiful mandalas. The Chicagoan magazine was the inspiration for the illustrations depicting students' favorite city locations here to my left. So thank you, and please feel free to come by and look at those later. Now I seek a motion to approve the Board of Education and Executive Session minutes for November 12, 2018, November 14, 2018, November 26, 2018, November 27, 2018, November 28, 2018, November 29, 2018, December 10, 2018, December 12, 2018, December 13, 2018. We've been busy. That's a request for a motion.
Yes. I move to approve the Board of Education and Executive Session minutes for November 12, 2018, November 14, 2018, November 26, 2018, November 27, 2018, November 28, 2018, November 29, 2018, December 10, 2018, December 12, 2018, and December 13, 2018.
Thank you. The motion has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Board members, are there any comments, errors, omissions, et cetera? Great. Then, since there are not, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries by general consent. Thank you. I would like to remind everyone in the audience tonight that we are in a public meeting, and we are all among neighbors and fellow residents. Appropriate conduct is expected from everyone. We ask that people speak only when called upon, that everyone treat each other kindly and with proper respect, and refrain from distracting behaviors such as loud conversations, clapping, or booing. Thank you. Okay. And with that, I request a motion to adjourn to a public hearing on the 2018 levy.
I move to adjourn to a public hearing on the 2018 levy.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Great, the motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to a levy hearing. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Terrific, thank you very much. And then that takes us to our financial presentations.
Yes, and we're going to start with our audit presentation. The annual audit is a key ingredient for making our financial projections. District 39 continues to earn financial recognition for our financial stability with a weighted score of 4.0 out of 4.0. Scott Dunzer, partner for Klein Hall Associates, will present the district's audit. We welcome Mr. Dunzer.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I just want to apologize. We're a month behind our usual schedule this year, and it's not the district's doing or mine. We were a little late in getting some numbers from the state of Illinois. I'll get into that in a second. But I hope everybody had a chance to get a copy of the audit report and take a look at it. There's also some other correspondence. There's some required communication letters that all board members should get in a copy of. We're required to provide that each year. In addition to the audit, we also filed the annual financial report with Illinois State Board of Education. And the last step we need to do is file the data collection form with the Federal Clarion House related to your federal grant programs. And we plan to do that within the next week or so. So I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about some changes we had for this year. There was a new governmental accounting standard that was implemented for fiscal year 2018. And this is related to OPEB or other post-employment benefits other than pensions. The one that is new this year is the THIS. That's the Teachers' Health Insurance Security Health Program. It's run, it's a component of TRS, but it's not pension-related, it's health-related. What this new government standard had us do was actually record a liability for this benefit in the government-wide financial statements. This is not a new liability. This is just a new way we are reporting it. The liability, because it's part of a cost-sharing program, was never really calculated before this year. So it wasn't really, it wasn't known, but it was there. So this year, in the government-wide statements, we actually had to restate, we restated net position by a little over $37 million at the beginning of, or as of July 1, 2017. So that was a reduction in your net position and an increase in the liability. So that is a big change from prior years. Like I said, the liability was always there. The dollar amount was sort of unknown because it was cost-sharing. And the state of Illinois had to run an actuary evaluation on it and then allocate it between all the districts in Illinois. The liability is so large is because there was never a trust set up for it. It was sort of a pay-as-you-go system like most OPEB liabilities are. There really wasn't a, most governmental units have not funded OPEB liabilities or put money aside. It always has been a pay-as-you-go. So that's what the Governmental Accounting Standard boards wanted to reflect that in the financial statements. The good news is, I think that we have captured in the last, with this OPEB standard and then the pension standard three or four years ago, I think we have all the liabilities that we can have now are reported in the government-wide financial statements. Remember, this does not affect your fund financial statements, the one you use for day-to-day operations and you use for levying purposes, budgeting purposes, and to run and to manage the day-to-day operations of the districts. So it doesn't have an effect on your fund balance, just on the net position, which is the equity of the districts. If you take into account all the capital assets, all the debt, the residual amount is your net position if you liquidated all that. So that, those are the new, that's the new big change for this year. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a clarifying statement. So in other words, with the new GAZB requirement, we have about another $30 million in liability. I don't know the exact, from the committee of the whole meeting, what that number was. But bottom line is, nobody was accounting for this number.
Correct. And this is, yeah, as of...
It adds to the pension.
Yeah, it's a liability as of, at the end of the year. And these valuations run a year behind because it takes them long to get them together. It was about 33.6 million district share. The state share was about 44.1. This is not a current liability, though. You're not going to be able, you're not expected to, you're not going to be expected to come up with this money anytime soon. But there could be changes in the funding ratio that you have to pay, and they could always adjust that. It's a very small percentage. I think it's 0.88% of the...
The point I'm just trying to make is it's another liability that we hadn't taken into account for that goes on top of any pension liability.
Correct.
That's already there. And that all isn't due exactly today either, but it is in the future. And therefore, it's a number that we should definitely be aware of.
Correct. That is true. It's just like a pension liability. It's not due today, but they actually, where they discount the future benefit down and get a present value of it. The idea is to recognize the expense as employees are incurring them rather than at the end.
Okay. Great, go ahead.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. If that's it, terrific.
Have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much, Kat. 2018 levy.
Yes, as we planned for the levy request, it's good to remember the district's financial philosophy. We aim to maintain and improve educational excellence for students while living within our financial means. We budget conservatively with unknown items in a given year. As only one example, we need to estimate the number of new teachers who will take health insurance as well as the plan they might choose. Also, we now have a target minimum fund balance at 40% of total operating expenditures. This helps us manage cash flow and provides reserves for unpredictable adverse impacts from the state of Illinois. As best we can, we aim to connect expenses to revenues as we do our budget process. At the end of last fiscal year, the district began a detailed expenditure review. After looking at several budget areas, the board determined that a deeper dive with an independent outside consultant would be the next step. This afternoon, I just got the RFP draft, and we're going to continue to move forward with that as we seek out vendors, and we're going to keep everybody informed. As we make our annual levy request, it's important to remember that property taxes are the primary source of revenue for District 39. As we know, the annual estimated levy request represents an increase tied to CPI and new property growth. So we often, we always know what CPI is at the time of the levy request, but we never know what the new property growth is. As a result, we have to estimate new property growth to include in our levy request this evening. The district's longstanding practice is to capture the full CPI increase as well as all of the available new property growth. Levying at a lower level in any one year could have a long-term negative impact on our financial future. Based on tonight's audit report, District 39 ended fiscal year 18 with a surplus. Operating revenues exceeded operating expenditures by $501,000. This represents only 7/10 of 1% of our annual operating expenditures. Also, the board now has an upper limit for fund balances of 65%. If the annual levy increase results in surpluses that bring fund balances to that level, the board needs to make an appropriate decision at that time, perhaps by using reserves on needed construction projects or by abating to taxpayers in a public meeting. With that, we have Ellen Crispino, who has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lachner. As you mentioned, tonight is the public hearing for the 2018 tax levy, and I'll be presenting the levy as well as the supplemental debt service levy. The law requires a public hearing when a tax levy exceeds 5% of the prior year's extension. However, District 39 upholds a higher standard for transparency than required by law. We provide an annual hearing to maximize transparency with our community, even though our levy request is below 5%. The levy is the amount requested by a governmental entity to be raised from property taxes. This levy request reflects the practice of extending the CPI plus the estimated value of new property growth. There are several variables that help determine the amount of the levy. These are defined on this slide. The equalized assessed value, or EAV, in a district is determined by local and county assessors and is unknown at this time. Under the Property Tax Extension Limiting Law, or PTAL, the tax cap, the base levy increase cannot increase more than the lesser of the prior-year-published Consumer Price Index, CPI, plus new property growth or the 5% cap. For 2018, the levy is based on CPI of 2.1% plus estimated new property growth. The levy estimate is based on several variables, as you see listed on this slide. Equalized assessed value and new property growth are estimated at this time. In 2017, District EAV showed an increase of 2%. We are estimating our EAV will remain flat for our 2018 estimated levy. However, when the county clerk extends the final levy allocation, the taxes will be adjusted to reflect the actual 2018 EAV. CPI is published by the federal government as a measure of annual inflationary impact. The December 2017 CPI of 2.1% was used for the 2018 levy. New property growth is estimated at this time. We begin by using a historical 12-year average of 15.6 million. Next, we are adding $4 million due to the renovation and reopening of Mather Place on Old Glenview Road. Additionally, we project 17.7 million for new construction within our community. Receiving property taxes associated with new construction helps the district to cover additional future costs. In total, we are estimating new property growth at 37.3 million. The aggregate levy includes a bond and interest levy of 1.5 million, which includes a supplemental debt service levy of $104,000 plus debt that was previously approved by the voters. This is the amount of the actual debt service payments for 2018. The supplemental levy is a standard practice. Showing here are the factors that are built into the 2018 levy. The amount of the levy in the cap funds is 54.1 million and allocated by funds as shown on this slide. The total aggregate levy request is 55.6 million. The district is requesting an increase of 1.1 million for CPI and 1.1 million for new property growth. Additional property taxes for new construction are paid only by property tax owners who have the new construction. The average taxpayer will see an increase for District 39 of 2.1%, which is applied only to the District 39 portion of the tax bill. District 39 taxes are approximately 1/3 of the tax bill. Therefore, the projected increase is 0.7%. Are there any questions?
Board members have questions? Go ahead, Tracy.
Not as much of a question as I have some statements to make.
In a second, we're going to have, so we'll go through the supplemental debt service levy and the five-year financial projections. We'll have a discussion then. You're welcome to make your comments now or later, whichever you prefer.
I just want it before the vote.
Yeah. It'll be before the vote, so, okay. So we'll wait.
And we'll have it in this meeting, not the next?
Yep. No, we're going to go through two more things, and then we'll have a board discussion, and then we'll have audience questions.
Perfect, thank you.
And we'll go to the vote in the next meeting, in the regular meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions, thoughts on this one? Great, then let's move on to the supplemental debt service levy.
And she included that in her...
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. The five-year financial projections, yes.
Annually, after the District 39's audit is complete, an updated five-year projection is prepared. This fall, the board approved a new minimum target for fund balances increasing from 30 to 40%. This was designed as a better way to account for unpredictable adverse impacts from the state of Illinois, for example, the pension cost shift. Prior projections that we presented to the public had included placeholder dollars for these unpredictable impacts. These placeholder dollars lowered the projection bars. This year, we increased the minimum fund balance target and removed these placeholder dollars at the same time. As a result, the projection bars will rise. In this way, our projections are more closely tied to our budgets themselves, and we are still protected from unpredictable impacts. This works as we now plan for adversity in a new way. And this change in approach pushed the projection bars upward. As a result, we view these projections tonight as a new benchmark. Finally, I'm happy to report that the operating fund balances are projected to remain above the minimum goal of 40% in the combined operating funds through fiscal year '24. Ellen Crispino has this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lachner. As we start to look at the financial five-year projections, we discussed these at our school finance committee in detail. We want to review several assumptions that are built into these projections. First, we start with the revenue assumptions. Each year, property tax revenue is increased by CPI plus new construction. The 2018 tax extension is projected to generate a 2.1% CPI increase plus new property growth. Fiscal year '20 through '24 reflects CPI increases based on Bloomberg estimates. New property growth is based on a five-year historical average of 14.4 million. Levy collections are at a 99% collection rate based on the last four years' levy collections. General state aid at state-mandated categorical grants assume fiscal year '19 remains flat for fiscal year '20 through '24. The assumptions include four payments made each year from the state. Similarly, federal aid is projected to remain level for those same years. Corporate personal property replacement tax assumes level revenue for fiscal year '20 through '24. Interest income is budgeted at 1.8% of last year's fund balance. The district has a conservative investment policy. Local revenues in both the education and transportation funds reflect the current fee structure approved by the Board of Education. Now we will take a look at the expenditure assumptions included in the projections. Certified salaries are to be negotiated for fiscal year '20 through '24. The savings from retiring teachers is also included in the projections. Administrative and support staff salaries are projected at CPI increases of fiscal year '20 through '24. Health insurance costs are projected to increase 5% for fiscal year '20 through '24 based on historical trends. This year, pension cost shift estimates are not built into the model as the board has increased its target fund balance to 40%, which is meant to cover unknowns such as the pension cost shift. Purchased services and supplies are projected to increase by 3% annually. The operations and maintenance fund, the models adjusted to reflect the cost of planned capital projects from fiscal year '20 through '24 as well as approved health, life, safety projects. Special education tuition costs are budgeted at an annual growth rate of 3% for fiscal year '20 through '24. As you look at the graph, you will see the district's projected fund balances for fiscal year '20 through '24 that reflect maintaining the operating fund balance above the minimum goal of 40%. Are there any questions?
So board members, at this time, let's have a discussion about all, both the levy and the operating funds. So Tracy, I know you had a question before. I think this would be a great time to, or some statements, I think you said. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. I'll just come right out of the box on this one with, I'm opposed to extending the levy, and here's where I'm at on that. Again, we're looking at 4.15% increase. Last year's was $51,932,761. This year is $54 million, if we get the levy, which we did last year, of exactly what we asked for. We'll be at 54, our operating budget will be at $54,904,15. Just to make everyone aware, since 2011, that's over a 20% increase in our operating budget. In 2011, which was the referendum year, after taking the referendum into account, I went to 2010, we were at $38 million then. 2011, we went to 44 after getting the levy, and we were already at 54. I don't see us sustaining 20% operation budget increases forever, really also taking into account that that doesn't at all reflect the people's salaries or incomes going up that much. Who pay for these taxes? Who pay for this? Secondly, we also, we're doing this in addition to noting that there was a $3.9 million in extra revenues noticed after we closed out the books in June 30. $3.9 million pretty much equals two times what we levied for. So that's an additional $4 million on top of $2 million that we received last year. So we're up six. Also, and that was due to lowering construction costs, health benefits coming in lower, which I appreciate you lowering the estimate down now from 10% to 5% because that is the actual, over the last nine years, 4.86% was what our benefits increased. And for the last nine years, we've been estimating 10%. So that's why we find some money every now and then. We're also coming up in 2019 to a triennial assessment year for our taxes that will be paid in '20. Business community just went through that reassessment, and it's been reported that they saw increases from 25 to 50% across the board in their property taxes. I will note here that we just raised the minimum wage or agreed to do that. So I would anticipate some businesses having some shortfalls there, maybe even seeing less business here, so less of a tax base. But we're, of course, charging them more again because we can. We have not, I'll save that for last. Also, we recognized a huge uptick in property tax appeals this year. I can't imagine why, and I'm being sarcastic when I say that. It probably has to do with the fact that we still have not recovered our housing values since the housing crash in 2010 like the rest of the nation has. In fact, CRANES just reported last week, or November 28, two weeks ago, that Chicago is expected, the headline is, back to the bottom for Chicago. We'll have the weakest housing market among 100 U.S. metropolitan areas next year. They attribute this to losing population, declining population, the economic forecast, property taxes going up, and so on. There's only one, three other metro areas on this list of 100 are forecast to go negative now. There is only one, three other metro areas on this list of 100 are forecast to go negative next year. Chicago being forecasted to go the most negative. Just common sense tells me I don't understand why our property taxes continue to grow as they do and our housing values continue to fall as they do. It's in, that relationship is manufactured at this point because that's, it's essentially property tax, property seizure, what's going on here. So, as a result of our stagnant housing, I went into how Willmet is not recovered. I know there's more. Oh, so we went, we noticed that new property tax appeals, there were more and more coming in. So, what did we do to do, to take care of that? We've decided to intervene in even more property tax appeals. In other words, let's intervene, let's get involved, let's pay our attorneys that we get the money from, our constituents, to pay them, to get in the way of them appealing for a property tax appeal when they believe that their value, or their housing values are overrated. What did we do? We decided to not just, we increased not just intervening at the PTAB level, but now we're intervening at the circuit level, circuit court level. And not even in addition to that, we decreased the amount of value, EAV value, that would trigger that appeal, trigger that intervention to that appeal. That was currently 100, that was before $100,000. Now, we're at $50,000. So, now we've, not only are we raising our community's taxes just based on the fact that we can, our housing values are going down. I got to be honest with you, I haven't seen our test scores going up real, like you wouldn't believe. It's not that the money, that's what the money's doing. I have, I'm completely opposed to this. And bottom line is, we promised an expense review last December at this very same meeting that we would take a dive into that and we have yet to produce that. We also said at that meeting, it would take just a couple of months to do and it hasn't happened. So, I'm opposed to the property tax, to the levy.
Okay, thank you. Other, other comments from the board, please, if there are any? Okay, I'm going to just say on my behalf that I disagree with you strongly on many of those points and some of them I think are misrepresented, including the 5 million found. So, you know, we've talked about this before, but that's fun. So, I just want to state for the record that I think, okay. In any case, I want to, I want to point out that we differ on this, but we know that. John, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to, I think, some of what Ms. Kearney is talking about, but I think I understand why we do what we do in the levy process. And, and I'm on the side, I think the board is with me, sorry to speak for you all, that it makes sense to do what we do, keeps up with inflation and that we're committed to focus on, on, I, I'll speak for myself. I am committed to look at expenses and look at where we're going as far as staying under the top end of what we view our fund balance to be, which is 65%. And I think that's, I think that's where I'm focused on looking is to make sure that, you know, at some point, we can get to, you know, when we're satisfied that we've well-funded the schools and we've well-funded our construction program, that we could get to rebating some tax.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead, Ellen.
Actually, I agree with John, thank you. And I just want to say that we, we've all been in this together and we have all been through all of this and discussed all this as a board many, many, many times. We don't always all agree, but the deep dive, I very much, and I think, I'll only speak for myself, but I, I, I'm very interested in looking deeply into the budget and I think we all have been committed to that. I think we've started it many times. I think we had false starts, but we all played a part in that and we agreed on those false starts many times. So, to, to point fingers at why, at why it went awry or why it, it didn't go exactly as we wanted it to is pointless. I think that we have looked, we have looked and deeply and we went down paths and we've looked deeply into many different areas and we have kind of tried to and then we decided that the direction that we were going and the way we were going about it was not the correct way and the most efficient way. So, we decided that we would do it a different way and we all agreed that it needed to be done a better way and a different method. And that was all of us. That was not one person or another, it was all of us. So, I just want to be very clear that we all agreed on a way to do that and it just was a misstep on a, on a direction and we stopped and we said, you know, we need to rethink the way we're doing this because it will take forever this way and we will do it the right way. So, it takes time and we're going to do it right. And I just want to be very clear that it's not because of a lack of wanting, but when you start, when you start something, sometimes it doesn't always go exactly as planned and we will start it and do it exactly the right way the next time.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from board members? Okay, I'm going to go with Lisa first. And then we can come back to Tracy.
Thank you. So, we do, we often talk about having, I guess, a, a value of being a fiscally conservative district. And I don't think increasing the levy is inconsistent with that value. Our costs do increase every year. Inflation continues to impact those costs. And there's commitments we've made to keep Willmet a high-performing district, whether it's our capital projects, including increased security enhancements, whether it's fair compensation for staff and the cost of ongoing innovation so that we're not resting on our laurels. Think we need to increase the levy to protect the financial health of our district this year and moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I said I'd go to Tracy, okay. Alice, go ahead.
Right, I would 100% agree with Lisa. We are this, we have to be stewards. Our number one job is to be a steward of District 39 and protect the financial health of our district so that we can educate our students, which is the number one priority. And I think we have been, I think we've been responsible and we, we run a pretty lean budget and we do a really good job in educating our students. And we've seen, we deliver equal or superior test results to all the feeder districts going into Nutria. And I think while the levy process, we're staying with CPI and we are levying to what we're legally allowed to do, I think it's a prudent thing to do, number one, for our operating budget and our ongoing education. But we've also been, where we've been able to find savings, we've invested in our district and we've invested in our buildings. And we've, if, if you start thinking about all of the capital projects and the huge investment we've made into our buildings and improvements we've made, which has definitely affected education, it's a pretty impressive list. And I think in order to keep moving forward in both of those areas, it's prudent to levy.
Okay. Frank has a comment as well, do you want, okay?
The, the points that, that you brought up were discussed in multiple meetings and we took some steps this year to address some structural issues. So, one of the items that, that was brought up was that we were covering risks in our budgets in the past by, by putting in our best estimates for what those risks were. What we introduced this year was a more structured approach to how we handle our reserves. So, we looked at how we set the lower bound, looked at our actual cash flow risks, made sure we covered those and then we put in a factor of 5% additional to cover the category of different risks, the category of Springfield risks that insurance might rise more than historical values, et cetera. And then we added a new topic this year, which was a cap, a higher-end target number, which we set at 65%. So, that if it turns out that some of our assumptions were optimistic that we got more revenue than we expected, our expenses were controlled and we had less costs and our reserves went up, that we had a way of, of one, highlighting that and two, formally deciding that we are going to discuss that topic. So, we put in some structures to make sure that if our assumptions for risks all came out to not be needed and then the reserves started to grow a little bit, that we had ways of addressing, as John mentioned, as we've mentioned in other meetings, to look at what's the appropriate way, which could include needed capital budgets or it could include one-time rebates to the taxpayers and/or other options. But that it had to be a formal discussion and not just something that we left, you know, on the table. So, we did put some structural changes in this year, both in terms of how we addressed risk and how we look at how our fund balances go up and down over the years.
Okay, thank you. Tracy?
Thank you. First, I want to respond to Ellen. We, we discussed this in two meeting, meetings. We discussed special education, one meeting, and then we discussed foreign language. We looked at that. We simply looked at what they costed, et cetera, what the costs were. We didn't look them in an overall budget or comparison budget and that's as far as we went with the expense review. Then every meeting after that, I said, when are we going to do the expense review? I also offered, said, why don't we have an extra committee? No, we don't have time, that's going to take a lot of time and go on and on and on. So, do not lump me in ever that we discuss this as a whole, okay? Secondly, then we finally decided that we would get a consultant on it because we weren't able to do it ourselves, so to speak. I love the fact that you take that responsibility, Mark, and you too, Lisa, that it didn't get done. I actually put it on Frank, who's our school finance chair committee. Where'd that go? It's, to me, all it states is it wasn't a priority for this board, okay? So, that's what, I'm going to just leave that at that. As far as you just went in this, our new structural reforms where we have a 40% lower threshold to the fund balance up to 65. The 40% does take into account what we used to line item if, if there was a property tax freeze, if we're going to see a pension cost shift, whatever. Those things have been taken out of our budget and those assumptions have been taken away and looks like we're capturing that in an extra 10% that we use as, our threshold used to be 30%. Now, it's 40% for a lower fund balance. So, we've got that minimum. Up to the 65%, what the biggest insult is to the community is at 65, we get there, we're going to discuss what we do with the money that we've kept from you already and keep it in our reserves. One, that one of the three options that's written in paper in our policy right now is, one, discuss and decide, well, maybe in the political climate or the educational climate, it's too risky to give that money back, so in other words, hold on to it. Two, maybe we should just build more stuff or there's some improvements there. Three, spend it, or two, spend it. Three, then maybe we'll look at something like abatement or rebate or maybe even paying for our fees, which I think we should be paying for our materials fees anyway when we continue to levy. If it's the least we can do is continue to levy like that. And you just made a reference to $500,000 being seven tenths of 1% of our budget. If our fees are $750,000, we can't find eight tenths of 1% in our budget to pay for the materials and fees that students need. I'm not saying about sports, not talking, et cetera, the bottom line, iPad, et cetera, to go to school and participate. So, I just wanted to clear that up right there. With the structural, we've changed things. I see it as a big fat workaround and I don't, it's another, just way of us taking somebody's money. We don't know if we're going to use it or not, let's just hold on to it. It gets up there, then we'll discuss if we can give it back to the people who provided it to us in the first place. I just have a problem on principle with that.
Okay. So, obviously, there's some pretty passionate feelings on this and, and I think, board members, we all know that those feelings are deeply held and, you know, honestly come to. I think, you know, we express our passions different ways, but unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we're going to see a lot of changes in that tonight. So, given that, I think it's fair to go on and hear from the community is our next point, yeah.
One more thing, is it in this meeting that I, or the next meeting, I pull it off the consent agenda?
Next one, we'll let you do that, don't worry. You know, you know we'll let you do that, we're, there's no problem. Great, so that takes us through our board member discussion and that brings us to our audience response to the 2018 levy presentation. And this is an opportunity for the audience to address the board regarding the 2018 levy. I want to remind you all that each audience member can speak on any topic, although from an organizational standpoint, it'd probably be helpful to have it be the levy right now. You have three minutes to speak and if you later want to get up in the second part of the meeting for another minute after you've taken your first turn at the mic, that's fine too. Are there any audience members that would like to speak at this time? If so, please come forward. And I'll remind you to use the microphone, state your name and community of residence and as soon as you've done that, we're ready to go and use, yeah, you got the mic on?
Testing, testing. Can you hear me okay?
You're ready to go.
Okay, I'm going to start my three minutes. I've got my clock going so you don't have to interrupt me and say one minute or two minutes.
Sure.
So, and I'll, I'll stay within the three minutes. I'm Mark Wiremiller, I live on Lawndale Street in Willmet. Been here about 19 years. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas. Some people call me a taxpayer advocate because I'm very concerned about taxes. I'm in the real estate business, I know a little bit about real estate, probably not a whole lot. I've got a couple of quick points here. First of all, I understand you had a collective bargaining meeting in executive session ahead of time here, which is kind of interesting. I would call it a secret meeting. I'm kind of curious what the collective bargaining is going on. I would like to be involved in that as, since I'm the one who's going to be paying for it out of my property taxes. I have a lot of ideas on how the new contract should be made and stuff. Unfortunately, I probably never will ever hear about it until after it's approved. Second point, I'm thinking about the pensions. Not much, not many people are talking about the pension mess, pension scam, the Ponzi scheme in Illinois. I do like the idea of the cost shift back to the district. We don't really hear much about that, but it really should be budgeted within the year. My plan, it'd be great if the board took this up too. You guys could be heroes of Illinois, of the 700 school districts, to be the first ones to actually apply IRAs, 401Ks, or possibly FICA to new employees to start a phase out of the, this whole thing, this unfunded pension that we never really talk about. I'm at a minute 27 if you're following here. Thirdly, I'm very concerned about this intervening on taxes. So, someone does a tax appeal and then you guys hire attorneys to try to reverse this. This happened a few years ago, the Village, the school board, Nutria School Board, a bunch of groups tried to reverse some taxes, a tax appeal on Baker Square, which got a big reduction and then you guys took action to try to get it increased again. So, you're basically trying to attack businesses and homeowners that are trying to get a reduction. I wish you just wouldn't intervene. Fourthly, on the levy, so we're, I don't know if we're, the numbers kind of threw me off, but from my understanding, we have declining population in Illinois, declining enrollment and declining property values. It seems like we should be cutting the levy. So, my idea would be to maybe cut the levy and then cut property taxes. I see in April, there are municipal elections, I'm announcing that I'm not running, although I would probably be an excellent board member. I probably would not agree with many of you guys on this. So, I encourage anybody watching on TV to maybe come out and run for school board. I, I, I think it's very hard to do, you probably already have to have your petitions in and stuff. But it'd be nice if we got, and no offense to you guys, but we need more taxpayer advocates and I am concerned about property values and, and the city of Willmet. And I guess that's it, I finished 15 seconds early. Thank you for the, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who would like to come forward at this time? Okay. As a reminder, please state your name and your community in three minutes.
Good evening. Beth Feely, resident of Willmet. So, I am here to ask you to not extend the levy. It feels a little bit like deja vu because I and dozens of others were here this time last year making the same request. But this year's different because you're voting to extend the levy after hearing last year from dozens of us who have real concerns about rising property taxes and who wondered if the schools, who receive the largest part of our local property taxes, really need the levy extended because it was characterized as quote, "money left on the table." These concerns are well-founded as Illinois has among the highest property tax burdens in the nation and we lead in outmigration. And I actually read earlier this week that Chicago now leads the nation in outmigration for major cities. These are all not distinctions that we want. Also, last year, the district admitted it hadn't done a deep expense review, which we referenced a little bit earlier, in five to six years and it was time to do so in the coming months, which to me means early 2018, but this was not done. As late as this fall, As late as this fall, at a committee meeting, a committee of the whole meeting, it was stated that no progress had been made beyond figuring out that the district needed an outside consultant and would consider some. And while I'm glad to hear that you have an RFP, I need to point out that it's a year later. And you're now asking, again, to extend the levy despite ending last school year with a budget surplus. I think it's important to model behavior for our kids, to say what you mean and mean what you say, and I expect the same of my elected officials. Please do what you said you'd do. Please complete the expense review before you ask for more money by extending the levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to get up at this time? So, once again, please state your name and community of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Johann Joseph.
Oh, you need to use the microphone, please. You have to turn it on too.
One more time. You got it now. Good evening. My name is Johann Joseph, and I'm a resident here in Willmett. I'd like to perhaps bring up some other points with regard to the levy. Just a serious consideration to at least recess any further levies. And I would like to perhaps offer a different perspective, perhaps an human element to this. I'm a really proud parent of three kids who've come through the Willmett school system. And I'm also very happy to say that even though we live in a relatively affluent community, there has been significant attraction from other parts of people moving into Willmett. The levy that we're going to be imposing is a significant burden on some of these folks. Some of these folks are people whom I've talked to. They have seen the value of the incredibly great Nutria School Systems, the Willmett School Systems. And as we are considering and moving forward the levy, there could be an impact on some of these folks going forward. I seriously would urge you to consider that dimension, especially as we are promoting diversity and also trying to be much more inclusive in this piece. Congratulations to all of you on running a very fiscally and financially sound, you know, school system. But I'd like to also say, based on the information that you had presented, that there's a cost of being extremely conservative in your fiscal approach. And this has to be balanced against the impact on members of the community. And whilst many of us are capable of maybe taking on some more burden, but as we know, we're flying into a, an environment where property taxes, for all the reasons that have been presented, more largely here in Illinois, and more specifically in our district, is putting a tremendous financial impact on many of us. While some of us can bear some of these increases, there is a not insignificant number of community members who will be adversely affected. I sincerely and would wish you all to sort of seriously consider the implications of what you're about to do, especially as we look at folks who might be on the fringe. At least for the moment, conduct and complete the financial review that you had promised us to do. We at least owe that to other members of the community who could be significantly affected. And I would hate to see some of them having to pick up and move when Willmett presents such a wonderful opportunity for progress. I appreciate it, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all today.
Thank you. Are there other members who'd like to get up and speak at this time? Come forward. Once again, please state your name and your community of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Betsy Hart.
No, your mic's not on.
How's that? Ah, great. Okay. Betsy Hart, Willmett. Merry Christmas. Thank you so much for serving. Again, I would, do want to reiterate that we were promised a budget review a year ago. I've been at many of the committee of the whole meetings on Monday mornings, where this has been, where this has come up, and it's been very much treated as an afterthought. We'll get to it. Yeah, 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 right. We have to look at that. This was not a priority for this board, clearly because it hasn't happened, and it should have. Second, previously, a former board member, Kimberly Alcantara, told me after the brouhaha, if you will, last year, that each board member takes their responsibility very seriously, and when the board, when the budget is presented by the administrators, they take out their pencils and they sharpen them, and they go through every nickel and every dime. And then I said, well, okay, in the eight years that you served on the board, or previously that you know of, has any nickel or penny ever been shaved from the budget presented by the administrators? And the answer was, well, no. And that tells me that, in fact, there's probably a lot more shaving and sharpening of pencils that needs to be done, just like in the family budgets. And I don't know about yours, but mine did not go up by cost of living increase this year. Finally, again, most of you do appeal your property taxes, which is fine. I do too. That's great. But I'm also not enforcing other people to pay property taxes that are just bankrupting in some cases. This is extremely important for people watching to understand, because for very arcane reasons, when you appeal your property taxes and you get a lower rate, and many of you have done that, someone else in Willmett pays more as a direct result. It's complicated. We've explained it publicly in the, in the group that we work with, with Nutria Neighbors, but it is unfortunately a zero-sum game. When your property taxes go down, your neighbors go up. So, if you really believe in what you're saying, then I hope that none of you, not one of you, will appeal your property taxes in the years to come. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to get up at this time? Okay. Please come forward. Once again, state your name and your community of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. David Heiser, Central Avenue in Willmett. Happy holidays. It's starting to take on a little feeling of Festivus in here. So, yeah, the conversation or the comment about deja vu again is kind of apt. I think back about the discussions that we've had on this subject here at this board and within the community over the last couple of years. Results have been pretty overwhelming and distinct in each time. But for me, it feels like tonight, the discussion is going down a little bit of a rabbit hole, a combination of national issues, state issues, Cook County issues. I think it bears some mention to reground on what the board's primary purpose is, and that's to provide for the education of our children. Not my kids, not John's kids, not, you know, anybody else's, right? It's for our collective community's kids and the community's good. And, you know, their job is not to set housing taxes, right? Their job is not to set state pension policy. Their job is to ensure that District 39 is capable of providing the resources, the capital investments, the correct qualified personnel to provide for the quality education of our kids. CPI increases can't be ignored, right? That's a national, or you could say international phenomenon, right? Prices go up. If you were to fail to extend the levy, fail, you would essentially be cutting the district's funding, right? Which then comes back and directly affects the quality of the educational services and the environments that you're able to provide for the children. That's not opinion, that's economic reality. Secondly, I think back to the point, the community's consistently defeated these sort of tax advocacy issues, regardless of, you know, what type of race that we're talking about, whether that's school district board, whether that's US rep, whether it's, you know, state rep, state senate, park district. There's been overwhelming super majorities of north of 73 and 78% in the last two major elections we've had in this community, who've come out strongly to support the candidates who have been on the side of properly funding and resourcing our local community's capabilities to provide for its constituents. And I encourage you to continue down the same path. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any others who would like to come forward at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on. At this time, I request a motion to adjourn to regular meeting.
I move to adjourn to regular meeting.
And may I have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any opposed? Motion carries by general consent, and we are now adjourned to a regular Board of Education meeting, which means that I get to ask the clerk to, once again, call the roll.
Mark C.
Here.
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 Great. Thank you very much. And that takes us to our board reports, and the first are our community, excuse me, committee reports with facility development from Alice.
Great. The Facilities Development Committee met as a part of the Committee of the Whole on December 10th, 2018, here at the MEC. We discussed two topics. High Crest Phase II construction. That construction begins next summer. At the meeting, our architects updated us on the construction progress for the engineering portion of the project. In particular, we talked briefly about the underground water storage system that needs to be installed in the outdoor classroom, and that we also discussed the work that the Garden Committee is doing to redesign High Crest's outdoor classroom. The Garden Committee plans to meet with designers in January and choose one firm to coordinate outdoor classroom design. This needs to be done this spring so that we can better coordinate with the water drainage infrastructure that's required. So, we will be working with STR, our architects, on that. The second topic was kindergarten enrichment. We reviewed budget estimates for the first phase of the kindergarten enrichment construction at Harper School, and expenses are currently tracking at Harper, for Harper's project a little below budget, which was good news. And as a reminder, the Harper construction will begin June 2019. The next facilities committee meeting will take place on Monday, January 14th, 2019, at 8:00 AM here at the MEC.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to the school finance committee report from Frank.
On December 10th, also as part of the Committee of the Whole, we held the Finance Committee meeting and discussed a lot of the topics that we're discussing tonight. The first item on the agenda was discussion of the 2018 audit. As mentioned, the audits were a month later this year due to structural changes that impacted all school districts. The annual report that was presented tonight mentioned one item in particular of note, which was the condensed statement of net position, for those of you that delve into this next level of detail. And that was the part that was the most impacted by the implementation of the new Gatsby rules that were discussed during the audit presentation. We also had extensive discussions on the 2018 levy. The proposal tonight will be voted on later in this meeting. We then discussed our five-year budget projections. Because of the change in our reserve policies highlighted last month, the projections are now reported differently, as identified earlier in this meeting several times now. So, we no longer add a factor estimating risk. We instead have a 5% reserve level to cover that risk. The other 5% increase in reserve level was due to a more detailed analysis of our historical cash flow requirements and identification that we needed slightly higher than the 30% number that we had before to make sure that we were covering our cash flow potential risks. So, that extra 5% in our reserve target is a better way of representing future risks. During that Finance Committee, we also discussed in detail the topic of student fees. The impact of reduced fees on the five-year budget projections were discussed. These fees generate approximately $750,000 per year, so the impact on our budget and the impact on our families and our students is significant. It was agreed that we would discuss this in more detail in the January meeting as part of an overall evaluation of priorities and trade-offs, among other options and issues that we want to fund in the future. The next committee meeting will be part of the Committee of the Whole, which, as was already mentioned, will be Monday, January 14th.
Thank you very much. Next up are our liaison reports, and Tracy, you've been doing extra duty as our liaison this month, so you have Committee, CRC, and Ed Foundation, so just go ahead and take them both.
And Legislative, but we're good.
We're going to do a superintendent update before we get to Legislative.
Perfect. Thank you. CRC had their meeting on Monday, December 3rd, and as a reminder, the current topic for being studied by CRC is mobile learning. As of the December 3rd meeting, the fourth grade D-39 survey and the Nutria Feeder School survey had been completed. Additionally, members of the committee had the opportunity to visit three different schools and also conducted a phone interview with one. It was reported that next step, CRC will create a K-3 D-39 teacher survey, visitor survey additional schools. Some reference were Barrington Consolidated School District 220, my school, Deerfield 109, Glencoe D-35, Sunset Ridge D-29, Burley School and CPS in Arlington Heights Consolidated District 59. They also plan to attend Leap Innovations Tour, if possible. The date hadn't been determined yet. CRC also reported that the audit that they, that they are auditing, I'm sorry, the report that they are auditing this year is the 2014-15 Cultivating Growth-Minded Resilient Students. And they've canceled their January meeting, and their next meeting will be in February. I have no clue. I didn't, I just know it's in February.
Fair enough.
Thank you. I had the January one written down and then realized it was canceled. So, Ed Foundation. Ed Foundation met on Wednesday, December 5th at 7:00 PM here at the MECC. Fundraising reported that the fashion show was an incredible success and noted they came in 20% of our budget. This was new, too. They had it in the evening versus during the day. Additionally, the annual fall appeal was, had recently been sent as of this meeting. I think it went out right before the Thanksgiving holiday, and it was noted that they were beginning to receive responses. Additionally, they participated in Giving Tuesday for the second time, and with a campaign push highlighting the appeal, and noted many of the responses they were receiving were as a result of the Giving Tuesday push, and also noted that they've noted, noticed that corporate matching is up. Currently, they are preparing for Trivia Night, the greatly anticipated night that sells out every time. That's going to be held February 2nd from 6:00 to 11:00. New venue is St. Joseph's Church. Also, preparing for Bingo Night, which will also be in a new venue, and that will be March 1st at the HMS Cafeteria, correct? And finally, Science Olympia ad is also underway with eight classes, 11 instructors, and 80 students participating. I don't really remember what was said about this, if it had been done, or it must have. Foundation also put out a survey regarding Science Olympia ad and did receive 100 responses, so obviously it had been done. And that's it. And their next meeting, again, I didn't write it down, I apologize for that, is, I'm sure, already happened with Alice.
Well, yeah, it did happen. I went, yes.
So, we'll have that report next time.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. Next up is our superintendent search update. Lisa?
Thanks, Mark. So, we've been busy over the last month. We held first round interviews with eight candidates for superintendent. We invited three back for a second and final round. Before we were able to have those interviews, one candidate received an offer from another district, and so she bowed out. But we and the stakeholder committee did have final interviews with two excellent candidates. We have made an offer to one of those candidates, and we hope to have a contract for presentation to the board at a board meeting on Friday.
Thank you very much. So, a lot of work has been done there, and then that takes us to our legislative update, and that's Tracy.
This is a short one. Really, nothing's gone on legislatively. The big news, I guess, I would report, we're waiting for the governor-elect, Governor-elect Pritzker to be sworn in on January 14th, and not a hot lot happened in the veto sessions, but the big talk is about the education transition team that Governor-elect Pritzker has put together. So, after January 14th, I hope I have more to report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And that brings us to our information items with written communication. Ray?
Yes. The board received written communication from Carleen Stevens, McAllister, Katie Arnold, and Allison Hout opposing the Illinois Association of School Boards resolutions that supported arming of school staff. The board also received written communication from Joyce Pollock regarding the successor District 39 superintendent. And finally, a communication was received from Carl Huffman opposing the maximum levy increase.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that brings us to the administrative announcements.
Yes, we began planning for the two thousand nineteen-twenty school year, and kindergarten registration is an important first step. Registration for incoming kindergarten students is scheduled for Thursday, January seventeenth between nine-thirty and five, and Friday, the eighteenth from eight to three fif-- eight to three fifteen PM at each of the four elementary schools. All of the necessary enrollment forms are available at the elementary schools and the district website, so please spread the word. And then finally, we received a FOIA this month from Jennifer Smith Richards of the Chicago Tribune requesting all logs detailing instances of student isolated timeouts, seclusion, confinement, and our restraint occurring between August first, two thousand seventeen, and the present, just for your information, that went out to all schools in the state.
Terrific, thank you. Do you want to go right through to annual business?
Yes. Okay. We have a proposed draft calendar online, and as we do every year, this calendar aligns with New Trier Township Holiday Calendar Schedules, and there are no other departures from our annual practice. The first day of school is scheduled for Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, and the last day of school, if there are no snow days, is planned to be Thursday, June eighteenth. Any questions about the calendar?
Is that no more school dates, snow dates?
This is next year's calendar.
Okay, next year.
Yes, yes, right. That is correct, this year, no more snow days.
Going for that?
Yeah.
And board policy review?
Yes, and you have the revised policies for third and final reading at your, in your reports. The revisions from second to third were highlighted in yellow. Dr. Gwacki, anything to add?
Okay, and this is the third and final reading, so we've had, we've all had plenty of input into these. Any comments from board members on any of the items? Great. Do you have one? Oh, okay. We're not, we're not there yet? We gotta do public comments again, so.
We have to, it's already separate.
This is, so this is the next public comment section. This is an opportunity for the audience to address the board again. And I'll just remind you, if you've already addressed the board, then your time limit will be one minute, but if you haven't, you have three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time and address the board? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our action items. Now, Tracy, let's give you a second to make sure you see whether or not you want to pull. So we're, okay. You got it?
Yep.
Great. So the next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? And just as a note to the audience on what just happened, we just pointed out that although Tracy wanted to remove the levy vote from the agenda a moment ago, we just identified the fact that we've already made that a separate vote, so there's probably no, we can't remove that item, and then there may be nothing else that anybody wants to remove. Is there anything anybody else wants to remove? Okay, so this will be the consent agenda, and Frank will make the motion a second, but just for those looking on, it does not include adopting the two thousand eighteen levy. Go ahead, Frank.
So I move to approve the personnel report dated December seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I move to accept the fiscal year two thousand eighteen annual fiscal audit and comprehensive annual financial report for Womet Public Schools as presented by Klein Hall CPAs of Aurora, Illinois. I move to approve a resolution authorizing a supplemental tax levy to pay the principal of an interest on outstanding limited bonds of School District Thirty-nine, Cook County, Illinois. I move to approve a third and final reading of the revised Board of Education Policy four colon ten Fiscal and Business Management and four colon fifteen Budget Planning. I move to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between November thirteen, two thousand eighteen, and December seventeen, two thousand eighteen, in the following amounts: Educational Fund, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and forty cents. ONM Fund, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. Debt Service, seven hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Transportation Fund, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Capital Projects, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Tort, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, for a total all funds of two million, thirteen thousand, twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. I move to approve the manual checks issued between November thirteen, two thousand eighteen, and December seventeen, two thousand eighteen, in the following amounts: Educational Fund, one million, one hundred and six thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty-four cents. ONM Fund, eight thousand, seventy-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Transportation Fund, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-six cents, for a total all funds of one million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents.
Thank you. The motion has been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes, the yays have it, and the motion carries. That moves us on to the next item, which is adopting the two thousand eighteen levy. May, would I, excuse me, may I have a motion for the two thousand eighteen levy?
I move to approve the two thousand eighteen levy and accompanying resolutions contained herein for requested amounts that can be summarized as follows: Educational Fund, forty-one million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Operation and Maintenance, nine million, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Transportation, six hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two. Working Cash, eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. IMRF, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. Social Security, one million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Life Safety with No Entry. Tort Immunity, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Special Education, three hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven thou-- five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Total Aggregate Levy, fifty-four million, ninety thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars.
And for the sake of clarity, the Life Sa-- Safety with No Entry indicates zero dollars? Okay. Great, I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this, this point? Great, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, the yays have it, and the motion is carried. That brings us to conference items. Is there any old business? Okay, do we have any new business? I have one thing that I slipped my mind. We now have an IASB representative, it's Ellen, and she went to the triple I meetings, so in the future, if we can add to our reports, ISB rep reports. So Ellen, you've got that?
Hey, Mark, can I jump on that comment?
Yeah.
There's also EdRed. I don't know, I think it would be, I go to those meetings monthly, at least when I can make it, which most of the time I do. It's not a requirement, but you learn a lot there. If someone else on this board would like to do that next year, I'm happy to continue to doing that, but I think it's a good idea.
That's good with me, I'm gonna look around the room. Do other people have thoughts, considerations?
And it's fifteen minutes, twenty minutes away where the meetings are. It's at Main South Township, and it's all of North Cook districts represented.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great.
I've learned a lot there.
Lisa?
Yeah, no, I want to second what Tracy said. I've been watching the agendas, would like to go myself, I think they look fabulous.
So let's work together to figure out who can be, who can cover those meetings, and then we'll go ahead and we'll put that as a, an additional board information meeting, or board information report each time. Sounds good. Thank you very much, Tracy. Is there any, so any other new business? Oh, any good in welfare? Great, may I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel? I don't think we need any more collective bargaining, so I'm gonna cut that. So we're gonna discuss just specific personnel. May I have a motion?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Great, the motion has been made and seconded. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes.
Yes, okay, the motion is carried, and we are now adjourned to executive session. Thank you very much for coming tonight.